It's come to order. Welcome to our work session. Questions on the agenda? Okay, on the consent agenda? Takes us down to... Spotlights I guess we're gonna do on Thursday?
Yes.
Annual policy review. This is this month's section of policies to review. Any questions or comments on that?
Yeah, I've got... I would assume that because of the way evaluations and tenure have both been changed by the state, it's gonna require a policy change for us to do, as everything looks like they don't address the way the state has done them now.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
That's a good question, yeah.
Evaluation and tenure both, the state has changed a good bit that's there. And as I've looked at those policies there, and same thing with tenure. Five, 109, and then five, 117.
As Angel-
I think both of those are gonna have to be looked at and make some type of a change.
Angel, can you come up?
Yeah.
Because I think TSBA sends us that stuff, but I don't know that we've gotten-
Well, that would certainly be driven by the state.
Yeah.
I have to go make a look, but I think, if I remember correctly, we've made the changes to the tenure policy. We have not changed the evaluation yet. And TSBA does those on a schedule, so they haven't sent those out yet for us to do. They should be coming.
And I looked at family leave also, and I know we discussed that in policy, and it didn't appear that it has changed.
It's not posted yet from the most recent changes.
It's not posted yet, so that's the question that I had.
We are having, I'm having a conference call with TSBA's policy person on Thursday, so that the thought is that after I have that training, then I will be able to make the changes and get them posted. So hopefully that will happen much more quickly once that happens.
That was gonna be my question. I don't mean to cut you off.
Yeah, it's okay. Well, the way they're presented here, I don't see how we can in good conscience, you know, approve those or whatever, the way they are. I mean, I understand that they'll get changed. I think at the point they are by Thursday or not by Thursday, do we table them until the next-
Well, we don't really vote on these. This is just-
Okay.
Well, and the copies I think that you've been provided, we included the newest revisions in the copies that you have, but the most current revisions have not been posted on the website yet. So what you should be looking at is the appropriate one, it just has not been posted yet.
Remind us where we are with TSBA. We signed a contract for them to host this for a number of years, or-
We are, my plan is to hopefully have all of the information that they have converted to Word files by this summer, so that we can maintain it ourselves after that.
And would it be in the format that we have now, or would it be in a different-
It'd be in the same format, same numbers and sequence, the way it is now.
It would be searchable and all that stuff?
It would be searchable, uh-huh.
Well, I'm just seeing on the screen that I've just pulled up, it says issue day 12-3 of '09, which means-
For which one?
For evaluation.
Right, we have not changed that one.
Correct.
Other questions on policy? It may be, after Donald and I leave, it might be that you fellows need to go through the entire manual again, policy by policy. But we did that a few years ago, and it was a lengthy process, but it was worth doing. All right, thank you, Angel. Any other questions on the policy? Okay, there's been a lot of discussion recently about legislation pending in the General Assembly. So, Mr. Gill, you wanna give us an update?
Yeah, there has been a lot of discussion. One that's generated the most is probably Senate Bill 2210. We found out here within the last day or so that there's a revised bill coming out of the House, which is Bill 2348. But what 2210 does, and our intention tonight was to present the board with a joint resolution from Murphysboro City and Rutherford County system, but it's really a moot point to do so now because there's this new House bill that's going to be proposed. But what Bill 2210 did was it increased the BEP pupil teacher ratio by five in each grade level. Since, I guess, it's been 92, we've had a 20 to 1 ratio K through 3, 25 to 1 4 through 6, 30 to 1 in high school, 7 through high school. What Bill 2210 did was it increased by five the number of students that we could take in each one of those grade levels. That said, attached to that was... There wasn't additional funding, however, there was a suggestion that the base pay for teachers would go up by $3,700, which in reality says we're gonna require you to pay $3,700 more to teachers, but we're not gonna give you more money. So how did you accomplish that? You started increasing class size, you started laying teachers off, which is a bad bill. It's bad for a lot of reasons. It's bad because we need to lay teachers off, and in reality, it's bad to increase pupil teacher ratio. I mean, we need, if anything, we need to be reducing them. Also, it put enormous pressures on schools from the standpoint of it allowed elementary schools, for example, that were built for 1,000, you could increase the size of that school up to 20%, which means you could put 200 more kids in a building, which where do they go? You add five to every classroom, which they're not built to accommodate that. You further congest hallways when kids move throughout the building, takes you longer to get them fed, less gym time, less fine arts time. So, in reality, it's, I think, a terrible bill, and I don't know who came up with this, but there's been a lot of discussion through tall state superintendent, school superintendents, and a lot of people have taken a position that we don't need to do that. Now, that said, they've countered that with a follow-up bill, which is Bill 2348. Is there anything I left out there, Jeff, Don, Paula? I think that pretty well summed it up, don't y'all? Well, the follow-up proposal would be House Bill 2348. What it does, it still, it requires, or, yeah, it increases the maximum class size to 25, 30, and 35. But what it doesn't do, it doesn't require any kind of increase in teacher pay. And it'll still be funded at the old rate, which the reality is, it drives, it would probably for us to have bigger class sizes, right? Plus, it would be pretty doggone appealing, I would assume, to, I don't know if I ought to say this, but the county governments and stuff like that, who see that, hey, they don't have to increase their budget and they can move more kids in building. But at the same time, it's counterproductive with respect to learning. You know, at a time where more rigor's introduced into the classroom, where more, you know, the standards are changing, teachers are, you know, they're working extremely hard to try to become more productive. And to me, this just, you know, is counterproductive. So, I think we sit on this for a day or two, but I think if any opportunity we get to comment on these two bills in increasing maximum class levels, I think we take a position that we're not in favor of that.
Okay, Grant. Stance on it, I haven't heard it.
I talked to one of them the other day, and I actually talked to two of them, and I think both of them think it's a bad bill. But they wanna, I just say they're not really excited about it, but they're unwilling at this juncture to commit against it.
Other comments? Don?
Well, I was just thinking, are there any changes in expectations of scores?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, they're going up. Don, I mean, the percentage that are proficient and how you become proficient are going up. Don's is kind of the resident expert on that. But it just makes no sense to do.
So we're gonna increase the load, crowd the buildings, and expect scores to go up?
Yes. Makes a lot of sense, doesn't it?
Maybe they want to use peer tutoring, and this would give them more peers.
Yeah.
Could that be the theory?
It may be. You know, we also discussed, there might be situations, and also the increase in CTE, the second bill, the 2348, increases by five the number of CTE classes. And there might be some classes where you could get by increasing pupil teacher ratio. We talked about that a little bit, but you don't, certainly don't want to do it in all your tested areas and the content areas. It just makes no sense.
Aaron?
The funding and the student teacher ratios, that certainly is tied to funding, but is that legislative that we can't have more than that many students in a class with an educator?
With a what?
With a teacher, I mean?
Yes, absolutely. It's been placed like, was part of the BEP in 91 or 92, was it? It was, that set the ratios at 20 to 1, 25 to 1, and 30 to 1.
So we can-
Now, there might be one or two more in a class, but the overall average in that K3 level, for example, would have to be 20 to 1. Same holds true at 4 through 6. It says 25 to 1, well, Mr. Hodge may have 26 or 27, but at some point, it's gotta balance that where the average is at, 25 to 1, in grades 4 through 6.
So this is not only a formula for funding, but it is actually a formula for classroom populations?
Well, the second, the second part, does it touch, that 2348, does it address funding?
It leaves that mechanism as a year.
It leaves you, they'll fund on a 20 to 1 basis for elementary, K3, 25 to 1, 4, 6, 31, 7 through 12. However, you still could increase your class size. I don't know why you'd want to necessarily do that, but there may be, as I said, there could be others outside of the school board and the school superintendent that think, hey, we can, you know, this is a way to maximize local dollars. Does that make sense?
Well, and the, wouldn't the theory behind the first bill and maybe the second one is that the school board would be under pressure perhaps from teachers? I mean, I could see teachers, I think most of them are more dedicated to educating the kids than to raising their salaries, but theoretically, there could be a tension there, couldn't there? I mean, under that first bill, the way they get an increase is through us adopting larger class sizes, if I understand it.
Exactly.
And would that be possible under the second bill also? I mean-
Well, they probably would be happier with the first bill, where there might be some more dollars in it for teachers. The second bill doesn't even do that.
But it still funds the pre-
It funds at the previous BEP dollar amount. They pay us based on the current pupil teacher ratio, but they allow us, second part of the bill would allow us to increase class size.
One-
Shell game, yes.
Yeah.
One area where, in the, on the topic of class size, is one area where, if they were paying attention, I've heard some discussion that may be worthwhile, that there are some CTE classes that are particularly academic and book-driven, as opposed to what we might call lab-driven, or something like that. And there might be some appropriateness for class size adjustment there, but you would almost have to divide the CTEs into two different classifications. You know, if they were really wanting to help us, that might be something that could help out, but I'm agreeing with you that this particular legislation doesn't look like it's helping.
Well, they may, in retrospect, they might be saying that in this second part of the bill. They may be saying, well, you, you know, you can increase your CTE classes to 25, but we're not forcing you to. We're saying you could leave it at 20 for those kind of classes you're talking about. There are some of them, like auto mechanics or culinary arts, that you probably want 20. Some of them you can accommodate 25 to 1. But they're not gonna fund you at 25 to 1, they're only gonna fund you at 20 to 1, which is where, that's where it would fit a bit.
That would work.
Yeah.
Other, anything other legislative-wise we need to know about, Mr. Gill?
You know, they'll, Tim-
I'm just gonna throw my two cents forth in-
Oh, please do.
And I'm ready to sign my name to anything that shows us as opposed to it. I think it's, I think we do need to be active. Kind of nice to see that our board is looked upon statewide as someone that can have a little bit of influence, and I think we need to use that if we possibly can.
We'll see how that develops. Yes, sir. Go ahead, Grant.
Could we come up and, I mean, could you come up with something before Thursday?
I think, if I understand, Wayne is actually representing us at the Federal School Board Conference in DC, and he's heard from the TSBA folks who are also up there who advised us to wait on a sort of resolution until they have a little bit more information about what these changes are, so.
In other words, they could back off of it?
Yes, and a resolution might be premature, might even-
Of course, they'll probably find out that we've discussed, like we are obviously, that we're not too happy about it.
Well, I think, I mean, that's, that's pretty much the take across the state.
Yeah.
I think they're, they're getting it from both barrels.
Right. Did you have another wood slid in?
You know, the thing, maybe we touch off quickly, the bill that that impacts 3rd and 8th grade promotion, where interventions have to be put in place, everybody's kind of afraid of what that could lead to. Could impact the retention level of both those grade levels. We actually sent a letter, the middle school principals at the last meeting wanted to know if it was okay to send a letter. I said, yeah, and it basically suggested that that bill not be passed. And the promotion would be limited based on TCAP performance.
Basically reading.
Yeah. Yeah. And you have to, once, if they don't score a certain height, at a certain level, you have to have an intervention put in place. And the only intervention we really could think of maybe would be summer school. What else would be a possibility, Paula, Don? We hadn't talked about it very much.
It has to be research-based intervention.
Yeah.
Well, we're not sure whether they would be done after the TCAP tests come back, or if it's something that you've had in place during the school year prior to that test being taken.
Right.
Angel actually asked the state to turn you for an opinion on it.
Yeah.
She doesn't have one either, but they don't understand it either, what maybe the intention was.
We don't get TCAP results, I mean, until well into the summer under best case, right?
Well, you get a quick score back, suppose, you know, this is the year that 20% of the 3 through 5, they're tied to the TCAP of their second semester grade, 25% 6th grade up, and you'll get a quick score back. And you have to score, you may have below basic, basic, proficient, advanced. You have to score at least basic, is what they're saying, which is a 70 basic, and proficiency about an 84, 85.
And that would come while the school year's still going on?
Well, they've been getting the high school ELC and the course test about-
Okay.
A week or two, but they've never had this many to deliver.
Right. And this bill would say for those kids who scored below that level before they got moved onto the next grade, they would have to-
That's what we can't get the answer to.
Okay.
Do you not make the determination until after that test? And does that mean then remediation has to come in the summer? Which if it does, then you're probably talking about transportation, states like Oklahoma.
Yeah, yeah.
Because if you're gonna get the kids that you need there, because there's certainly not a great many days left by the time it gets back, if at all.
And then if it's not in the summer, you put them back a year, right?
Right.
On the other hand, it's hard to argue against them being proficient before they move on. I mean, but as a practical matter, how do you make that work?
But there, there's a whole host of bills. You know, there's more suspense down there than when they released a Harry Potter book. We just don't know what the, what the next bill's gonna be.
General discussion. Aaron?
This week I became aware of a bullying situation at one of our schools and how well it was being handled. And with as much attention that bullying in schools had been getting, I wanted to highlight what was going on there. And a parent was bringing this to the attention of the school, the principal, the faculty, even janitorial staff and bus drivers are taking careful attention to make sure that the situation is being handled compassionately and with a motivation of equal treatment, not special treatment, but equal treatment. And I was really impressed as I heard it related back to me about what our, what our schools were doing to be sensitive to that issue. So, you know, we have responsibility as board members to discuss things that need attention and also things that are going well.
Good.
Just a side note to that, I mean, we have some good character ed programs in place. People are addressing the bullying issue as best possible, but bullying, as all of us know, has expanded over the years with Facebook and Twitter and, you know, everybody and their brothers is putting out propaganda to other kids, and, you know, it just spills into the school. And if you didn't have all those electronic mechanisms, make our job a lot easier, as far as I'm concerned.
Just from my perspective, I do think schools, teachers oftentimes get an undue brunt of those kind of situations because of what can take place, and it's difficult to detect. I know one of the results of that, there's suicides, and, you know, when you're in a big high school, you can almost expect, you know, tragic things happen. And there was never a time that I'm aware of in those situations where the six teachers that that student would happen to have had, had not looked back and tried to almost beat themselves up as to why they didn't see those signs. So I know that the awareness is there, that you try to do that, but your kids are smart enough to oftentimes, they recognize to do it outside. And there's a, there's a, the unwritten code out there now, too, with a lot of teenagers, that, you know, you don't tell on anybody, you know, the word narc is just something that's out there. They just, they're not gonna do that so many times. And so, we encourage teachers to have their antenna up, but no matter how you have it up, sometimes you still recognize those things, tragic things happening. And I do know based upon their response after the fact that they're extremely remorseful and wish they could have seen more, wonder why you don't see more. But it's so difficult to find.
Grant?
I was involved in the situation yesterday at one of our schools, and the staff and SROs, different ones involved, and they really handled it well. And it's a situation, what you mentioned about.
Is he got the cool?
I'm not aware of this, so.
Has he got the cool?
So I think it was handling it, they jumped on it real quick and got it under control.
Thank you. Other discussion?
Greg, like, Mr. Kelly over there, he's one of the newest grandfathers in Rutherford County.
Hey, congratulations.
His daughter-
He thinks I was old, did he?
His daughter's the teacher of my granddaughter, and I can tell you that they're all, that whole class is excited about it. A good thing.
Very nice.
Tell them send money if they get, you know, a guy that kept out of it.
Other discussion. Don?
This is pertaining to the Booster Club supplements, and I don't want to get myself in trouble by saying I'm astounded by the amount that we still see coming through, but that is the case. I would appreciate, Mr. Gill, if, I would just like to see, I see some of the same names coming up. And that's not necessarily that I see that as a total, but I'd kind of like to see how much is going through the, an individual school.
Like, some, like, total supplement, for example, paid at Blackman High-
Right.
Versus Riverdale, or?
Yeah, just because that was one of the discussions we had, is, if you know, about the different levels of supplements at different high schools and schools, and I'd just like to see that.
I think you're keeping track of that.
We're trying-
Yeah.
-to keep it in such a way that we can come back and do that. We can't pull it out on tape, which I wish we could, that would be-
Right, right. But we rely on everyone submitting-
Right.
-those supplements so that the board can approve them, and also they've been told numerous times to do that. So presuming they're all accurate, we should be able to put something together.
But they seem to be submitting them at different times, aren't they?
Yeah, they come in at different times.
Makes it hard to compare. Tim, did you?
Yeah, since you brought that up, I was gonna ask this question. What does it mean on the dollar figure there for some of these NTE? What does that stand?
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed. Good code.
And then some of the people you'll see will appear a couple of times if the request, if they send in a second request, you know, that's like $150, but they've already sent one in for $600, we'll list, we'll show them.
Other discussion. Terry?
I was just gonna make, I had a chance to look over the fact book, I don't know if anybody else has it, but I feel it's well done. I was just curious back here where you got the expenditures per student. How do you project those? How you go back and project those out through 15, through 16?
Page that on Mr. Hodge?
Page 6.
Jeff, you want to answer that, how that's reflected?
Page 6.
Page 6. 2011 suspension per student, 68, 64, state calculates it, doesn't it?
Just putting a growth factor and an inflation factor, it's pretty hard to-
Well, what's reflected on the state report card? Where's that number?
The state report card is, they include, they take things out from this number and they add things. They go into the cafeteria program, they go into federal funding. This is only GPS.
A lot of good information in this book, and I think you put it online, don't you, James?
We have it, but we can't.
I think you ought to. I mean, it shows the remarkable, almost unbelievable growth that we've had over the last decade or so. So it's some good information. Aaron, did you have a comment?
Just came to mind as we were sitting here a little longer, but what is our obligation with student teachers? When we host a student teacher, is there burden to the school system? I know that, you know, sometimes it can interfere with classroom, and there's been some discussion about with higher standards, maybe not as much attention with student teachers. How does, how is that working out?
I don't know that we have an obligation to take them, however, we need to take them. We're the, we're probably the fastest growing district in Tennessee. We hire a lot of new teachers. It gives us insight into who some of the better teachers are. There's obviously a protocol in place for how long they, how much time they must teach in a class, how much observation times. They go to two separate placements, and it's just, it's been a great working relationship between us and MPSU. And also, we give them feedback with respect to what teachers are lacking, you know, like, for example, we had a meeting in here three or four years ago, five or six years ago, seven, eight years ago, with first-year teachers, and invited the entire MPSU hierarchy and the education department down here, and they were stunned at some of the things they were missing. And I was proud to say that when they left here, some of them had their feelings hurt, but they saw, hey, we gotta, we gotta start working on this, that, and the other. And what you're referencing then, the state is looking at one-year placements that will require, you know, more time in the school. And I see those guys being used in remediation and enrichment opportunities, work with kids. The scary thing is, is it could take a teacher out of the classroom a little more if you in fact are turning it over to your class to a student teacher. And if they're not as effective as a teacher, then it could come back and hurt you on your evaluation scores. So, we've already done some proposals, some discussions on how we could ensure that that doesn't happen. Does that make sense to you, what I'm saying there?
It does.
So, anyway, you got a good marriage with MPSU. How many new teachers we hire a year, Paula?
New teachers?
Yeah.
Probably anywhere from 100 to 200, given their vacancies and potential.
Yeah. So it behooves us, obviously, to be a player in that.
Tim?
I'm working with five student teachers now through MPSU. All five are really good, and I've put a bug in two different principal's ears, that, two in particular, that you need to go ahead and do it. So I, I think it can, it can be a very effective way for the school system to recruit good teachers, because you get a chance to pick at them. As I had to- because you get a chance to pick after them. As I say, I had two last semester and five this semester, and all seven have been outstanding. And I think that the co-op teachers in the schools do a good job of monitoring that, and they're not going, they're just not going to turn it loose to people that cannot handle it or can't handle it the proper way. That's been my understanding. And I think the principals are very strong in that regard, too. They recognize that you just can't, you just can't turn it loose to somebody that's not capable of handling that.
The student teaching timeline, if they're involved in student teaching for spring semester or something like that, they would very likely be degreed and qualified for a placement in the fall? Is that an appropriate understanding?
Yeah, that's correct, you know, Paula.
That is correct. For this year, the current process, a student teacher, one semester is about 17 weeks, two, eight-week placement to two different schools, and then they're certified at the end of that time as long as they've taken and passed all their practices and meet state requirements, and then they're ready for employment fall.
I tell one-
Oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say, a little bit off what you're talking about, next year, we'll see one of the first results of the American Diploma Project with all the needed math teachers. They'll start picking up that next unit of math. How many, Don and I have talked about this, and Paula, how many more math teachers are we probably going to need next year?
It's probably at least a dozen. See, the way the principals can tell, they know how many's enrolled in the senior math this year. And if it's out of 500, it's 200, then you're going to have to have 300 more spaces next year because everybody must have a math. So, we've done some of it. It's 12, 15, what they're looking at.
Yep.
With that increase and so many other things, where I was going with this is, is it appropriate for us, perhaps, we've got a great relationship with MTSU, but with Stewart's Creek on the horizon, would it be appropriate to reach out to Vanderbilt or other institutions and maybe get, you know, a broader base of student teaching in 12, 13 in anticipation for the, for the hire up on Stewart's Creek?
We take-
We do accept student teachers from other universities, provided they contact us and we can find a location for those student teachers to be placed. But we already have a consortium of universities that we connect with for recruitment favors for those candidates. In fact, we're going next week to Williamson County. We'll probably see about 2,000 candidates that have graduated from local universities in education or seeking employment. And we also, for recruitment, this year, we're going to go electronically out to the nation seeking ESL, math, and physics, and chemistry, those hot points that we need in our system, and sending that out to all the universities that we can, that have strong teacher ed programs.
Other discussion. Notice at your desk, you'll have a schedule. Next Wednesday's a big day in terms of the search. Board members will be involved in the lunch, and I think we're encouraged to go to the forum at 6:30, which will be here. And Mr. Bennett is presiding over all these sessions. So, please plan accordingly for that.
What's our, for lack of a better term, marketing for getting word out on the community forum?
Yeah, there'll be an advertisement.
And we'll put it on the webpage.
And we're also doing a message to parents in the school messenger, so it'll go out to all parents tomorrow.
Okay. And could we get a list of who was specifically invited to the luncheon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Other questions on the, on the search? All right, we'll see you Thursday night. We're adjourned.